On that note, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'll ask Heather to call the roll, please.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Snavely?
Here.
All right, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you may.
With witness to my United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, one unity, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now can I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Although, any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will begin today with the proclamation. I don't think there's anybody here to receive it, I don't know. But, it needs to be ready. Whereas, Native American Heritage Month is observed by acknowledging the contributions of Native Americans long before the formation of the United States, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of this country. And whereas, Native Americans have influenced every stage of America's development since helping early European settlers survive and thrive in a new land. And whereas, Native Americans have shared their rich history, culture, traditions, and respect for nature passed down through generations. And whereas, the city of Oxford and Miami University are located within the traditional homelands of the Miamiya and Shawnee people. And whereas, in 1972 Miami University and the Miami Tribe of Oklahoma formed a relationship that has evolved into a mutual partnership. And whereas, this year, the university and the tribe celebrate fifty years of their unique relationship, its significance, and how they have been partners in learning throughout the years. Now therefore, I, William B. Snavely, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim November one through November thirty, 2022, as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Oxford. And I urge all citizens to celebrate the rich cultures of the indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges Native Americans face historically and present, and recognize their continued significance in our community. Next, we have a presentation from the BCRTA, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. So my name is Luis Rodriguez. I'm the Planning and Special Projects Manager for BCRTA. I'm fairly new, so much so that I do not have a headshot. And today, we're presenting something very exciting. It is our transit plan. It's the first of its kind, first time we're doing this. And we're in a stage of this plan where we're going for our second round of public outreach. It's going to allow any recommendations as to how we can improve our system. Improvements are going to include everything from shelter infrastructure, vehicles, alternative fuel, new alignments for routes, et cetera. And as I said, we're in that second phase of public comment, and we're asking for the public to comment. We have in-person and paper survey, excuse me, we have in-person paper surveys as well as online surveys, and I'll get to that in a moment. So with our existing service, I'm sure you are all aware of the Oxford routes. But we also have our regional routes and our Middletown routes as well. We also have our on-demand service, which we refer to as BGO. I know that in the city of Oxford and Miami University, we do have that late-night service. And we also have paratransit service. So here's an update on our project. We're trying to see what our markets want, what our market is saying, what our riders, non-riders, and other stakeholders have to say, and we're collecting all these data points and putting them together so that we can get a big picture and see what it is we need to do. Some strengths about our system, it's fare-free, generally reliable and on-time, and the drivers are very friendly and very knowledgeable at the service. Areas of improvement are expanding to other neighborhoods and connecting with the region. As well as, specific to Oxford, we would like to go in the direction of bidirectional routes. And finding more operators has been a challenge for everyone in this industry, but it's something that we're working on. Another thing too is improving the real-time information, the shelter infrastructure, making the service more accessible, making it easier for people to understand where it is our service goes to and from, and that being education in general. Our public survey responses of all of them, the top two are that the bus doesn't come frequently enough and it doesn't go where they want it to go. That's not uncommon for most systems in the world, but it's something that we're trying to work on by conducting this study. And here are some improvement ideas. Here's one for the express route service. It's currently operating, but we're planning on extending it north to Middletown and having two alignments, one serving the downtown area of Cincinnati and another one serving the uptown area of Cincinnati by UC and the Health District. And here is the most important one to this crowd, the Oxford Route Ideas. As you can see, there are two scenarios presented in front of you. One scenario on the left is showing routes that are specific to Oxford. And in the other scenario, one of the routes is a greater part of a regional route. And here are some ideas for routes that serve Hamilton, and some for Middletown, and our regional routes. Now, as I said before, we would like for you to engage and let anybody that you know, know about this so that they can engage as well. So I recommend going to the BCRTA TransitPlan.com where you're going to have this interactive map. Public comment period is open through the twenty-fourth of this month, so when you get this map, you're going to be able to view both scenarios. Top-left corner, you're going to see where it says "currently viewing" underneath the BCRTA logo. You're going to see Scenario One or Scenario Two from a dropdown. And this function's similar to social media. You can drop a pin anywhere on the map. You can comment on pins that have been dropped by other commenters. For example, it doesn't have to be specific to a route. It could be a stop. You could say, "At this intersection, I'd like to stop," and then somebody could go, "Oh, I would like to stop there as well." So thank you for your time. Don't forget, go to BCRTA TransitPlan.com. And if you have any questions or comments, you can reach out to Sean Cohen, or myself, or Matt, that's good. It's the Executive Director of BCRTA. Any questions at this time?
Does anyone have questions? I know that three of us have already heard your presentation. Anyone else have questions? I know that getting onto that website is the key, and I think that's the purpose of this presentation, is really to alert people to get onto the web, see that website, and look at it in detail and make comments there.
Well, I would just jump on, as I said this at the planning commission, but I think if you've been around Oxford long enough, you know not to take for granted the high level of transit service that we have. When we first moved here, there was zero public transportation and only the Miami-I-River was called, but the buses that ran from Miami was a private service. The fact that we have public service and that it's fare-free to everyone is really something not to take for granted. And also that BCRTA has always been so collaborative in approaching the city and working with us is really like, it's amazing. It's a partner we didn't have fifteen years ago, so.
And a lot of people don't know that it's fare-free.
Fare-free.
Something everyone's very proud of.
Yeah, I was, I was not living in Oxford when that decision was made, so when I came back to town, I didn't know that. And so I think it's hard to communicate, you, age-friendly Oxford, all these different groups have a hard time communicating to the public the things they need to know. So I hope that you're able to get the word out.
And just the last thing is that everyone needs to understand that they're planning within the fact that really the sole source of operating revenue are Miami student fees. So if the routes are biased towards serving students, there's a logic for that, but to the degree we can help the routes also serve the rest of Oxford and over the long term that we can figure out how to BCR, to increase funding to BCRTA so they can better serve non-students, that'd be really great, so.
I have a question. How long is that feedback window open? So how long will it?
So it's been open from October twenty-fourth. It'll be open through November twenty-fourth.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Okay, next, we have a Notice of Legislative Authority, a transfer of permits, D five and D six to Wiseman Enterprises Holdings, 151 West High Street. I would just ask the city manager to comment briefly on what's going on with it, and then we'll receive it.
Well, as states on the permit, it's moving from forty-five East Bar and Grill, which is at forty-five East High Street, to 151 West High Street. And so this is just a transfer of their current license. It's a D five and a D six. A D five allows a holder to sell spiritus liquor, beer, so on and so forth until 2:30 a.m. And the D six allows it to be sold on Sundays.
And remind us what's at 151 West High Street?
Remind, what that address?
What is there?
That's Princess Theater.
But that's on Beach Street?
No, that's not. Excuse me.
Yes, that's what I thought it was.
I said correctly.
So it's where their new restaurant is going to be?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to receive without coming.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This time, we invite anyone from the public who wishes to address council about items that are not on tonight's agenda or on the consented, or that if it is on the consent agenda and you'd like to talk about it, now would be the time to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you five minutes, as we do everyone who comes to council. Not seeing a mass rush to the podium, I will assume that there are no public comments tonight. Thank you for coming. We appreciate all of you, in any case. We'll move to the consent agenda. Can we have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions, and you may read the first.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Oxford Cemetery Association to assume management and operations of the Oxford Cemetery.
Thank you, and can I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and Doug, are you going to talk about it?
Sure. So as I had written in my report to council, Chris Allison, who's president of Oxford Cemetery Association, has informed the city that the board voted to have the city take over the Oxford Cemetery by the end of November of this year. The reason they've made that decision is the cemetery manager is retiring on November thirtieth of this year. So this entire cemetery is located within the city limits, and it consists of forty-seven point two acres on three parcels of land. We're obligated to accept the cemetery if the association dissolves and abandons it. In order to facilitate this transition, we're presenting you tonight with a management agreement. And this will allow us to work out the transfer responsibilities, transfer of assets, so on and so forth. So you have on the legislative agenda tonight a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a management agreement with the Oxford Cemetery Association. It'll end when all assets and records are transferred to the city. You'll see within the agreement that it will be in effect December thirty-first. So we will, we'll have some involvement before that time. We've agreed to plow the roads if there's any snow, and of course, we had a little snow which didn't necessitate plowing this past weekend. But we've agreed to do that in the interim, but until December thirty-first, they'll continue all other operations such as selling plots and so on and so forth. But after that date, then we will probably have legislation before you at the next meeting to basically take over the cemetery. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. I know I have one, and others may as well, but first, let's go to the public. If anyone would like to address this resolution before council. Seeing none, any questions from counselors?
I'd like to add something. That legislation to authorize the city manager to accept the deed and record it, that would be done by an emergency because we need to have it take effect before the end of the year, so it can only be done with one reading, which then would require the supermajority of the vote, but I'd like the public to know that's the reason for the emergency.
Oh, okay.
Not for the, not on the resolution, but on the ordinance reporting in December.
I was going to say, all right. I was going to take issue with you. The resolution stated that right away. All right. Here's my one question.
Yes.
Is, and I think I know the answer to it, but we had talked about the fact that the Cemetery Association has assets.
Yes.
That will help us.
Yes.
Get through some portion of our ownership of it, and on number nine, it says "transfer of association assets and records."
Yes.
That what it follows, it says "upon the expiration of this agreement, the city shall take full possession and ownership of the cemetery."
Yes.
And I wonder if we want to say "and its assets."
Uh, we could.
Because otherwise, it just sounds like it's just the ground.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's.
Would it be a friendly amendment to say "and its assets"?
Sure, sure, that's fine.
And its records and assets and records. The cemetery, its assets and records.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? I just think it would be clearer that way. All right, it's a friendly amendment. I don't, without objection, it is so included. Are there any other questions or concerns?
So the first question was answered, so that, I wasn't clear for this resolution, but it is also fee simple or title to the property itself. And then, in terms of the business operations of this, like how do we, how do we absorb this organizationally? You know, I mean, some of it's like mowing and plowing, which we have the least capacities for, but some of it is grave digging and things that are new to us. So I guess, so yeah, how does this work with the city and?
Well, obviously, we're taking on a new responsibility. We'll have some, you know, additional hours. You know, when you have a cemetery, one of the biggest hurdles you have is before Memorial Day, you got to make sure everything looks nice. They average about ten cremations a year over the last four years and fifteen full burials. So it's not a huge workload, but of course, that can vary from year to year. You know, right now, we think we can handle it with the existing staff as far as financial records, selling deeds, accepting payment for those plots. And when it comes to mowing, we anticipate that we'll probably be hiring some additional seasonal staff. They have four part-time seasonal staff, but most of them were, I think all of them were retired from Miami University. And of course, they come to work for the city, they lose their healthcare subsidy, so they're not interested in continuing employment with the city. So, you know, we will take a look at things. I mean, this is happening fairly quick. We had been meeting with them back in 2010 and discussing their financial situation. So I congratulate them for being able to continue for an additional twelve years. But because their manager is retiring, they feel it's best to go ahead and turn it over to the city rather than try and hire someone for a short period of time. Because.
Do we do perform cemetery functions already with Woodside?
Yes, we already perform cemetery functions with Woodside, but, you know, it's a much smaller cemetery. Our burials, cremations are a lot less than this one. So, you know, they have about three hundred and seventy-nine grave spaces available, forty-three niches available. And, you know, we'll continue using their fees, and as I said at the last council meeting when we discussed the fee ordinance that will incorporate those fees in our next year's fee ordinance, you know, to institutionalize them. But, you know, we think we can get the de-transfer done before the end of the year, which makes it, you know, clean because we're on a January, December thirty-first fiscal year. And so, you know, we encourage them to go ahead and, and they originally wanted to turn it over to us by November thirtieth, but we've talked them into keeping it until December thirty-first. I believe Chris Allison will be taking care of whatever financial things they need to do, so.
Okay.
Well, and just for, we have the benefit of the communication internally, but it's basically municipal obligation.
Yes.
So it's something that we are obliged to do, so.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. Is, do we imagine that this will be another board, so then we'll have two cemetery boards or Woodside will just also cover this?
I wouldn't think so. I think we could handle it with the same board, you know, there's not a lot of.
The Woodside Cemetery Board, I've been on it for years and we've never met.
Yeah, I mean, basically, council deals with the fees that we charge and, you know, we manage it with our existing staff. So I don't anticipate any additional workload for the Cemetery Association, but I would think we might want to change the title to basically incorporate both cemeteries.
Yeah, have the same, same people on both. All right, are we ready? Please call the, oh, no, this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution is adopted. And now we'll move to number two.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mount Ross Auto Group for the purchase of three Ford Interceptor utility vehicles with specified options at state contract pricing at a cost not to exceed one hundred thirty-two thousand forty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we have Lieutenant Robinson here.
Good evening.
Talk to us.
As we've talked about in several of our capital budget hearings and meetings, we've had an issue with cars. We got authorization from you folks back in January to purchase three cars, twenty-twenty-two hybrid police interceptor vehicles. We were notified during the summertime, there was probably going to be a problem with those, and then in October, it's about three weeks ago, we were told that that was confirmed. They had canceled our order. Our dealer honored the fact that we had ordered three vehicles from them and did some work over the summer preemptively, put an order in for three more vehicles matching the same specs we'd put in for this year. The portal to make that order closed without us having any opportunity to get new vehicles, unfortunately, they had placed that order for us. Unfortunately, the cost is a little bit more than what we had originally anticipated for this year. So just under twenty-three thousand dollars is the additional amount for these three vehicles. So we're asking for authorization to move forward with the purchase order to buy those vehicles.
So it sounds like we're going to actually get them this time.
Well, I'm not going to make any promises on this one either. They are scheduled for the first production run in January. We will see. I think hybrid is what's causing the issue. Places I've talked to that ordered regular gasoline engines did get their vehicles. The hybrids, they did not, and it's a chip issue, so.
Okay.
If you drive down in Kentucky, you'll see thousands of vehicles parked at the Speedway again that don't have chips and they are waiting for whatever now.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, is there questions or comments from council?
Can you just clarify? So we are, these are still also going to be hybrid vehicles, or we're going to a more standard?
These are also a hybrid order. They match the exact same spec. They took the same sheet, everything that we had talked about in January. It's just a twenty-twenty-three model instead of a twenty-twenty-two model.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are you ready to go? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Lieutenant Robinson. We'll move to ordinances, first reading, and we have one.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six fifty-four supplemental budget ordinance number nine to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two and declaring an emergency.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt it, since it's, I want to let the public know. Normally, on first reading, we wouldn't have a motion in a second, but because it's an emergency, then we do that. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution, or this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Joe?
Yes, the first item on here is to make an adjustment to the budget receipt and expenditures for the twenty-twenty-two Community Black Development Grant of a hundred eleven thou, hundred, no, one hundred and eleven?
Thousand dollars.
About one hundred and eleven thousand dollars, yes, sorry about that. And this is to repair, it's the stub there, it's in disrepair before the end of the year. And the next item has to do with what Lieutenant Robinson was just talking about. This is to make an increase in the budget expenditures for the three Ford Interceptor hybrids. And this was due to the cancellation of previous order, and this will get them in the queue so they have new vehicles, so they don't have problems with their own ones.
Okay.
So that's why it's an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone from the public wish to address this ordinance? Counselors have any questions or comments?
This requires a three-fourths vote too, as you know.
I was about to say.
Oh.
This ordinance requires six votes in order to pass, so please call the roll.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Snavely?
Yes. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much, and we'll move to second readings, and you may read the first one.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Oxford, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Alex, and a second by David. Joe, any changes?
No changes from the last reading.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? We did have a more full discussion of it last time. Any counselors have questions? Seeing none, you may call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Snavely?
Yes.
You may read the second when you're ready.
An ordinance outlining budgeted advances for the city of Oxford, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you. And Joe, are there any changes on this one from the last one?
No changes from last time. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right. So these are advances. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Any counselors wish to address this ordinance? You may call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Snavely?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted. When you get a chance, we'll read them with three.
An ordinance outlining budgeted transfers for the city of Oxford, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Joe, you've got a lot of work doing at the end of the year, don't you?
Yes, yes, I do. There's no changes unless somebody wants to listen to me read them off again, which I doubt.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address budget transfers? Advances. Okay. Hearing none. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, you may call the roll.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Snavely?
Yes. You may read the next one.
An ordinance to adopt fees and charges for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Glenn, thank you very much. Any change? Seconded by Glenn, thank you very much. Any changes on this one from our last time?
No, there's not, thank you.
Okay. And is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance before council? Okay, hearing none. Council?
We had discussed the, I mean, the possibility of some sort of waiver for those things to support in at least a minor way, people's desire to move more, help us with their climate goals, specifically thinking about the charges that we have for lease electric vehicle chargers for solar arrays and solar arrays with battery. And I know we raised it before. Do you have thoughts about this, Sam?
We realize the optics of it is that we're not supporting it or we're not incentivizing it. Our recommendation is to keep it like it's written because those fees go to our building official. And we would waive our internal fees, our zoning fees for those as a small incentive. And then in next year, we would look into some type of a mini grant of some kind to somewhat compensate that and also to maybe even go further in supporting the installation of those. So that's, that's what our recommendation is. It's really not a new fee. It's just adding a label for the fee for the administrators that are handling the paperwork on this. So solar panels and electric vehicle charging stations.
One of the things we had also talked about was that we were gonna do, see how the parking garage is being used. And do we have any information on that?
I mean, the parking garage, we have the, you know, three floors fully leased.
Right.
And we have a waiting list. You know, we, you know, have available for the public the first floor.
Right. And I recall in a, in earlier discussion, way back in early year, there was a comment that it wasn't being utilized very well.
Well, I think-
And so I'm wondering, the question came up, well, if it's not being utilized very well, maybe we could adjust the hourly rate for the garage and incentivize people to use it. And that would open up spaces on the street and-
I think that's true, except, you know, when we have special events and stuff. College has Parents Weekend, it's, it's pretty busy then. And there are times too when the hotel utilizes some spaces down there as well. So, I mean, it's, you know, if we lower the rate, it's offset by not being available for these special events and so on. It's up to city council. I mean, we're not recommending any change, but if city council wishes to do that, you have the ordinance in front of you.
Well, here's the thing, and I'm really speaking to my fellow counselors. In basic economics, we were taught that if you set a high price, that doesn't mean you're going to make more revenue. And if you're not selling at the higher price, then you lower the price and it incentivizes people to use them. If people use the parking garage more and filled it up on a regular basis, there would be more spaces available for businesses on High Street and Uptown. So I'm wondering whether my fellow counselors would assent to a reduction of that particular rate, which is on, it's got it highlighted somewhere.
I guess I would say that these are kind of like policy decisions that I think we have the Oxford Parking and Transportation Advisory Board. I mean, I, I recognize that the thing is, is this comes to us at the end of the year and hasn't come through any kind of board process, but I think that-
We, sorry, not to interrupt, but it did go to the Parking and Transportation Board in May, and they recommended no changes.
Okay, all right, thank you. That must have been the one meeting I missed. So, yeah, at this late point, the process haven't thought through enough the pricing dynamics to make a decision one way or the other. I mean, I think it's, I think the garage is separate issue that we're basically maintaining a garage for leaseholders is, I hope that the economics, I hope we're making, breaking even on the garage. Because I think it was meant to serve the public.
It was.
Leaseholders is a kind of a separate dynamic.
What do you mean by breaking even?
I don't know what a revenues and expenses, how they compare on the garage. I mean, we do not put money back for the replacement of the garage. So at some point in the future when it needs to be replaced, it'll be, you know, an expense that we'll have to finance. But, you know, we get a lot more for the second and third floor leases, which we lease to the public than we do for the lease that's in place for the Elm Street Hotel. Okay.
For example, we have a waiting list for the second and third floor. We've talked about possibly leasing half of the first floor because we could make money, but then that just, you know.
Yeah, that it's not for the public garage anymore.
Yeah, exactly.
So anyway, that's, I don't know what a rate would be and I, at this point, I'm not sure I could know what the right decision would be on how to set a rate and tinkering with that at this point. I just-
Just wondering, Chief Jones, did you have anything to offer?
My opinion would be to change the rate now without official occupancy studies and really examine the issue. It is not prudent, but again, that's your policy decision you can do. I think it's, it's a, you know, it's not heavily, I mean, just anecdotal evidences that it's not heavily used, but you see cars in it throughout the day at different times. And then it's definitely the overflow parking when there's events or family weekends, things like that. And it's, it's, it's filled up and, you know, we are, you know, people are paying that amount. But, so I, I see open parking spots on High Street as well, so I'm not sure that lowering the rate there, you know, I feel like we have a pretty good balance right now. But if that's something that we want to study, we could have, you know, an occupancy study. Those are a little bit labor intensive for us to do, but we've done them before and where we literally count cars every hour. And then we, we bring it to the Parking and Transportation Board and then, and look at those. So, but we haven't done that.
Chief, I have a question for you. The parking garage, I just read the thing, it's the same dollar per hour as, as the High Street and all the other uptown, non-beach, non, I forget what the other one is, the church or whatever it is, lots, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right. I have to make an argument to the contrary of your statement by saying we're charging the same price for covered parking that is central to Uptown, that I think we should charge more for because it's covered parking central to Uptown.
I understand that. However, basic economics tells us that the charge, if indeed it's not being utilized very well now, then the charge needs to be a little bit lower to get it to be used. So what I would be amenable to is sometime within the next six to seven months, if we could have time to do a study and then send it to Parking and Transportation and let them, as long as they understand what the issue is, I would be satisfied at this point.
Yeah, I think that's something we can do and especially after council lowers the prices now on-
Side streets.
Side streets. You know, how does that affect the parking garage? So another occupancy study seems prudent to me.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say there's two conflicting things there, right? So we have full occupancy on the leased ones and we could expand that to fill that. So that demand is there, but then it's not quite as public. But the demand isn't there for the public access part, you want to lower that. And normally I'm very careful about this because I prefer to serve the public. But in the case of parking spots, those that are filled in the leases are likely moving out of spots that would be in the other public spots that are available locally. So they both sort of serve the public, just not in the same way. So I agree, you kind of need to study to work this out before we jump into it.
Yeah.
I also have a question slash other thought. I have driven past it so many times, I don't know that I paid attention, but is there one of those kind of very classic, like P parking signs on the outside? Because my question is, if I had no idea, like where I was going in Oxford, I would just park on the street because I wouldn't inherently know that it's there and it's questionable-
You could put a sign.
-as to whether it's attached to the hotel or not. So I'm just wondering if like, not that I'm saying signs are cheap, but maybe some just direction of traffic flow could be helpful?
I think that's a really good suggestion.
We don't have a P sign, but we have a municipal parking garage sign on that southeast corner.
Yeah, I mean-
Maybe a P sign.
For visitors, I think it might be a wise thing to have. Right, I mean, I think we could look at wave finding and in other areas directing people over there. But I would have to, you know, amazingly, I drive that and don't, don't know off the top of my head.
Well, it was designed to not look like a parking garage. Boy, we've done it. So I think if you, if you get a sign up, give that a little bit of time before you do that study.
So if we could just circle back, I appreciate coming back to the idea of the solar thing is I really, I don't want to, you could go down the road of waiving certain things and not or other things, but apart from the optics, I think it's the one little thing that we can do to, to make it a little bit easier for people to do what we're hoping they're going to do. And so whether we waive the fees or we create some kind of backfill, you know, whether that's a, you know, I don't know what it was saying, if it's a need space thing or whatever, I think it would be really nice next year, rather than wait till 2024 to, to do it. I mean, it would be really nice for us to be able to say in our fee waiver, you know, I think it'd be nice if we could say these fees were waived for these developments. And if we don't say that, then what kind of program would enable us to, you know, like, I don't remember the words used, whether it's like a, I'm at loss for words, basically scholarship or whatever you call it, a grant. I, I hope that we can look at that in 2023 rather than wait till 2024 to do it. Time is, the clock is ticking on the climate, you know, so stuff that we can just-
Did you want to say something about that?
I was just going to say that the homeowners don't know that these fees are even being required. The contractors are handling their $30,000 projects. So we can certainly look at that. But I'm not sure that it would increase the participation level. I think a grant might, but I'm not sure that a fee waiver would.
So you'll be looking at it?
Sure, we certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move on, Mike, did you have something to add with the parking garage stuff? You looked like you wanted to say something. I don't want to make sure we didn't.
Well, I got 100 comments.
I'll say them for the parking board, please. Okay.
Yeah.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, if you'll follow the roll, please.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted. We'll move to number five. Ready?
Ready. An ordinance establishing salaries and certain benefits for the salaried and hourly, full-time and part-time employees within the service of the City of Oxford, Ohio, paid from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Thank you very much. Hi, Jessica.
Good evening. There's no changes from last time, so happy answering questions.
Okay. For the public, this just sets our, our salaries for next year. Would anyone like to address this ordinance before council? Okay, thank you. And I will open it up to counselors. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, you may call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted. Can you read number six, please?
An ordinance amending chapter 935 Trees, Shrubs, and Other Plants by Adding Section 935-191 Managed Natural Lawn Area.
Okay, since the time of its, of the first reading, the Environmental Commission has indicated that they might like to discuss this and work on it and then bring it back to us. So I would entertain a motion to postpone this ordinance until the Environmental Commission has discussed it and returns it to us with a recommendation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of postponing until the Environmental Commission can give us a recommendation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That is it for ordinances. We'll move to number seven, announcements and communication. And I'll start with city manager Elliot.
Just a brief comment here. As you know, the contract that we have with Oxford Township for the provision of fire and EMS services expires at the end of this year. We've met with Gary Salmon, Township trustee, and discussed a new contract. I've sent them a proposed contract. This one would be two-year since we're looking at possibly asking the voters for an income tax or property tax increase to provide more firefighters. So we thought a shorter contract would be in place. So hopefully I'll have something to bring back to city council at the next or the following meeting in December. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Chief?
Nothing, thank you.
Joe?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Chief Dethridge?
No.
Okay. Sam?
One last time to mention the open house for tomorrow night at the middle school at 6 o'clock for the comprehensive plan update. So we're in the, going towards the tail end and we'll come back to this body hopefully in January, go through planning commission after tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Nothing.
Glenn?
Nothing. Yeah, so I made some comments last session regarding the importance of voting. And I believe some individuals in our constituency took offense to it. So let me clear some things up. When I talk about rioting at a ballot box, I'm not talking about taking up arms and assaulting people that are administering balloting services. I'm talking about if you are willing to talk about something, then you should be willing to vote about that same thing. And the reference that I was making when I was talking about rioting at the ballot box was actually the same reference that I made in 2020 regarding the aftermath of the George Floyd incident where an individual named Killer Mike went out to, or he made a statement to people of color that basically said, please stop rioting in the streets and breaking things and destroying the infrastructure of our country. If you're going to riot, riot at the ballot box and vote the people out that caused the decisions that get made that result in particular incidents happening. So to those constituents that took offense to this, that is what I mean by rioting at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things from me. One, the rec board met this week and we were talking about in light of the leash law being passed, which is super exciting, that we want to make sure that having a bigger dog park or another dog park stays on the council list of priorities. I know it's in the comprehensive plan, which is also great, but I know that our recreation department is feeling a little bit of a squeeze. So I hope that folks know that the dog park is what it is for now, but we do hope to add bigger, more robust dog park facilities in the future. And then my other note is that we don't have council again before the Oxford Holiday Festival, which is December 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Most of the morning festivities will be taking place at the Oxford Community Art Center and then transferring to Uptown. And our lighting of Uptown will take place at 5:30 p.m. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Amber?
Yes, exciting news about public art. There is now public art in the municipal building. And my understanding is that the staff, they're enjoying it very much. I want to thank again Jessica and the Public Art Commission for all their hard work. Doing the call for art, we had, I don't know, I think it was 120 some applicants and we're looking forward to doing this annually. So more great things to come from Paco. We also had a great living room conversations. We had a couple. We had one on abortion a couple weeks ago. We had one on political stereotypes last week. For those of you who don't know, Living Room Conversations is an opportunity for people to come together across divides and have conversations around difficult topics. The point isn't to change anyone's mind or convince anyone or to debate, but to sit and listen with curiosity and with respect. And if you're interested in participating in more of those, we'll have more coming in the new year. Please subscribe to the Interfaith Center's mailing list. They're our partners for Living Room Conversations. I want to thank Counselor French for her help on that as well and the Interfaith Center for their participation.
Jason?
Nothing from you tonight.
Okay, Jason?
All right, so I want to just kind of note and, and thanks to staff for shepherding us through the budget process and all the parts of that. I think that most people in the city don't really have a full appreciation of the complexity of that, in part because if you look at a budget, it's hard to know what's going on in there. They're just happy to know that, that the, the revenues exceed the expenses and, and that the, the city is on a good financial footing. And, and I'm glad that we've been able to make some, translate some priorities that come up through the staff ranks as well as through council and the- that come up through the staff ranks as well as through council and the retreat that are in the budget. Not all are. And, and I know that it's a challenge to try to get all the priorities there. Um, I hope that we can keep working each year to try to make, I mean, this is my fifth year of doing the budget and I still am trying to figure out where, how one can shape, you know, people look to us. And one of the biggest responsibilities we have is, you know, we pass ordinances and stuff, but the budget, people look to us for that too. And, but each of us has kind of a limited role in that. In council, we are present by, by, by the charter, we're presented with the budget by the city manager and we must adopt it. Um, I'm really glad we've worked forward in terms of having more robust, um, uh, retreats at the beginning of the year. But I think we have to keep, I'm, I'm glad that we keep incrementally working towards a little bit more public engagement, a little bit more public communication about how the budgeting process works. Um, it's still fairly limited. I think the cit-, you know, the citizens probably, there's a lot of ways that the process could be made easier for the average person to understand how to shape it. That said, the comprehensive plan meeting tomorrow is a really big opportunity. If you have thoughts about how the city should, what the city should do in the future in terms of policy, but also budgeting, show up and contribute to the comprehensive plan. Because one of the more exciting pages in the comprehensive plan, there's a chapter called Plan Stewardship in there that has a flow diagram that's pretty cool, that really envisions a way in which in the future, if we have a comprehensive plan, that can inform our retreat, which can then inform the budget priorities, get pu- input from the public, and hopefully we'll do an even better job with that next year that we can take that input on and meaningfully use it, that, that we can have this really nice kinda dynamic. Um, uh, again, some of the budget is just kind of, it's meeting the basic obligations, but some of it's guided by our priorities. And, and if you wanna shape the priorities for our future budgets, contribute to the comprehensive plan. So.
Okay, thank you. Everybody has talked about the things I wanted to talk about. Um, but I, I do encourage you to attend tomorrow night. It's easy to remember tomorrow night, six o'clock at the middle school. And, um, the holiday festival coming up. So pay attention, spread the word, get on social media, let people know. It's, I, I guess my comment would be that communication in this age is one of the most difficult issues we face. Um, it's been talked about by the Coalition for Healthy Communities, Age Friendly Oxford, a lot of different organizations, the Senior Center, that we don't have a common mechanism to communicate in our community. And, uh, so it behooves all of us to share the information when we can. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.